See the red light?
On out.
Yeah, it's on.
Free to do, don't worry me tonight.
I, she's supposed to be here. Have you read it or no?
She waiting.
Six thirty. And for the pledge allegiance. Ready, and my pledge allegiance is stood by the United States of America and to your republic, the which stands one nation under one God, indivisible, with a reading justice. Okay, so the meeting was called at six thirty. We did the pledge. Please look over the minutes, that's the next thing. That for approvals. We'll approve the ninth first. It's on the back. On the back of your agenda. Anybody see any corrections?
Motion to accept is written. August ninth, twenty eighteen.
All approved in the minutes of August ninth, two thousand eighteen, say aye.
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 Any, anyone different, unopposing, say aye. Okay, so they've been approved. The next one is the thirteenth. And they do run to the back of the sheet, so.
I'm making motion, the minutes is written for the thirteenth, the twenty eighteen, September.
Oh, yeah.
Second.
All approval, all approved in the thirteenth. Disapproval, aye. Okay, so that one was, that was the eight, you guys all saw that, that was the AT&amp;T meeting we had, that was that special meeting. Okay, now we do the twentieth.
I've already read it, so I'm making motion for Sept., September twentieth, September twenty eighteen is written.
My second, changing the date.
Yes, changing the date.
Yeah, just change, change your date up there. So, everybody approved in the minutes of September the twentieth, two thousand eighteen, all approved, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Don't age, I would assume, and heard all the ayes again, so we're all set there, okay. So, all the minutes have been approved, and now we move on.
Now Laura told me that the previous was gonna be present and wanted to talk about the boundary line adjustments, but they're obviously.
Yeah, and she had talked to me about that li-, uh, boundary adjustment, and she, she thought the selectmen were gonna do it for her. And she's, it's not the selectmen that do lot line adjustments, it's ours, she sat here that night with her whatever, I don't know if that was her attorney or the guy who's, I don't know.
I think it was the guy from the solar company.
From the solar company, and we told her that night she had to fill out the information, and.
Submit it to the planning.
Submit it to the planning board.
You haven't, you seen do any of that?
No. No, so, but Laura's been getting some stuff from her back and forth, and Laura keeps telling her that it goes before the planning board, not the selectmen, so.
Yeah, and I talked to Laura a little bit about it, 'cause we, she and I weren't exactly sure if it was zoning or planning board, but we found the form for it, so.
Yeah.
'Cause I told her, well, in the two years I've been doing this, I've not done a lot line adjustment, but that doesn't mean that the planning board doesn't.
Yeah, no, the planning board does lot line adjustments, so, which is, I mean, if she wants to come the next time, that's fine, she's just gotta fill out the paperwork, I, I think she's having problems with, the way I'm to understand it, a butters. She wants Laura to go ahead and do the butters, it's easy enough to come in here to get the butters.
The whole, part of the whole process for the lot line adjustment is she has to do all that notification, not us.
Right, so anyways.
Board of something town or planning board, none of us do that for her.
No, but, but, you know, if she needs some help finding out who her butters are, I don't mind coming in and helping her.
That's, that's fine.
You know, put, get her, get her a butters, but then after that, she's on her, she's on her own. I can, I can explain things to her, but I can't fill the whole sheet out for her, you know, none of us can, so, but. All right, so the third thing on the agenda is our code enforcement officer, just Mr. John Momo, he's got some stuff he'd like to bring up, and of course, what he's gonna bring up is gonna, gonna take a, a lot of this effect at the March, when we vote to change some stuff in our, in our books that we need changed. When the board did this book, we, we put it together and we knew there was thing, things gonna need to be changed in this thing, of course, we all know that anyway, so. So, John's gonna go over three of them tonight, I guess, and then we, we got that other one we gotta discuss about, with the hairdresser lady and stuff like that, you know, where it's at, how we're gonna adjust that too, so, so we might end up doing a workshop. One Saturday, just come in, take the things that we need and fix them up and get it squared away and present it to the voting public. Okay, go ahead, John, I know I went a little long.
First of all, I wanna, I wanna say, I'm just coming up with some things in the book that I don't know how to enforce, because there are some things were admitted from the old, I don't know how to charge for them, I need some clarification from you. So, the thing that I'm gonna be, and I'm gonna continue to come to the meetings, because as I go through the book and as I do the permits, I find things all the time. Two things very major today, I'm not gonna bring them up, this is something that we're gonna wait until the Monday night meeting with the selectmen. Uh, the first one is, is there a minimum size house now? There used to be six hundred square feet in the old ordinance.
Not, 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 not in these.
Okay, so what you're saying then is tiny homes can be admitted in town?
I think I talked to you on that one again, and we're gonna have to, and the board is gonna have to decide if we're gonna go ahead and allow tiny homes in, into town, because I know John said anything with a tiny home, most of them have wheels on them, and they are considered.
Mobile homes?
Mobile homes, and mobile homes cannot be permanently installed unless they're on a pad.
They can, well, no. You can bring, you can bring a mobile home into town, you can only stay for nine months, then it has to be moved.
Right.
If you take the wheels off it, then it becomes a mobile home trailer.
Right.
That has to have a slab, it's gotta have tie downs, everything, so then it becomes different, so it depends on what their use is and what they're, what they're calling it. So this needs to be clarified, because we have nothing in here about that.
So what we're gonna have to do is start going through and looking up some wording on, on, on that and making a decision on.
Okay, that's number one. Pretty simple one.
Tiny homes, that's pretty important.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, that's a recent boom.
Yeah, yeah, all over, even Hawaii's got them built, they're building them out there now.
Okay, the second one.
Lava comes over. They picked a move, the lava comes over.
Yeah, the second one is, we have neglected to do anything in the new ordinance about reshingling a roof or residing a house, there's absolutely nothing in there.
I don't remember anything, was there anything on the ordinance? The old one didn't have anything, because we mirrored ours.
No, there, there was, there was a five dollar permit for reshingling the roof and five dollar permit for residing a house, it was in there. But I mean, now we don't have anything at all, so how do I charge somebody on a building permit when I don't have anything? How do I go about charging?
Was that something we decided, because it was only five dollars, we're gonna let it go?
Well, there was a reason for the five dollars for the reshingling, it was to make sure that they got rid of the shingles correctly.
Oh, okay.
That, that's the whole reason, that was why it was put in, 'cause that went in when I first went in as a selectman.
I don't remember seeing that come up at all. When we were doing the ordinances over, I didn't, I didn't see that at all in there. And I read everything.
It was in there.
Wasn't in the ordinances that I was reading.
Question, when you have somebody who wants to renovate the house inside, say, the kitchen, they have to get a permit.
Yep.
Okay, it goes by the square footage, correct?
Square footage.
Okay, well, there's nothing to say interior or exterior, so why can you not do the same thing by square footage?
Okay, so if you have a house that's twenty-four by thirty-two, which comes out to.
Thirty by thirty.
Twelve hundred, whatever, square feet, and you charge them, um, what we normally charge, a rate, it's a living space, so you gotta charge them forty cents a square foot to reshingle a roof? You're talking probably four hundred, five hundred dollars?
So, take it down to the exterior, which would be the minimum, 'cause it's not a living space, outside the living space.
Okay.
Okay, so what would be the price at the lowest end, ten cents?
That's twenty cents.
Okay.
See, that's what I'm looking for, I need, I need a number set on it, so that I know what to do, I, I don't, and, I don't have anything right now.
Yeah, so, I mean, just for sake, no, just take my house, it's thirty by thirty, you have four sides, it's eighteen nine square feet, so at ten cents, that'd be a hundred eighty bucks.
That's how, that's how eighteen bucks.
So that's something we gotta get in the book.
That's something we have to put in, okay? If the roof is, you know, a square footage of the roof, I mean, I mean, say, you know, it's ten cents, that's why it's exterior.
So right, right now, we're gonna go with the ten cents.
That's, that's fine.
But we gotta make.
Right now, we can't charge anything.
We can't charge anything until you.
Until it's in here.
Until we get it in the book, but if we'll, when it comes up, you'll know that it will be ten cents.
We have to amend that ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So as of the amended version of December of twenty fourteen, there was nothing in here about siding or something.
So the old, I'm going way back.
Yeah, that's before a lot of us were on.
Geez, John, someone's went born way back.
We weren't charging and we continued to charge and everybody was happy with it, nobody said anything.
Yeah, 'cause I, I've never read it, John, I've never seen it.
Okay, we, we need something put in.
And I often wondered, looking at the zoning ordinance, how do you know what car people based on it?
Ten cents is not big deal.
We need something in the book, for me.
Eighteen dollars, like, to get five or something, you know, like.
Yeah, so that's something we wanna make sure that we get into the, to it, into the correction of the ordinance, is, but as you know, you'll know as of the first, after March, when we vote on it, that.
You can enforce these things if you have a hearing now, and they will be legal until the March meeting, until you put them on as a warrant article.
And then definitely.
Then everybody votes on them, but they're legal until then if you wanna do that.
It's up to the pleasure of the board.
I mean, it's, you do it whatever way you want, but it is legal to do that.
I think we should probably wait till the next meeting to make that decision, make sure that's a legal thing to do.
Yeah.
Not, not gonna dispute this, but, no, a lot's changed over time and stuff like that, if there's still existing law, then next meeting, we should probably take care of it and.
Take care of it and let John know.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item is fences.
Yeah.
Fences are a major problem, because I have somebody that told me today, oh, if it's in your backyard, you can put a six foot fence up, but you can't put it down on lakefront property, but you can put a four foot, and then the four foot fence really hasn't been corrected in the book yet, it's still forty-two inches, it was supposed to have been corrected at a meeting.
Voted on that.
It was voted on, but it never got corrected in the book.
Okay, so we need to update that section.
Maybe not on, online, but it's corrected in all of ours.
Yes, but it's never been, it's never been corrected in the book.
Four foot in the book.
The, the thing that I'm looking for though, how far off a side set can you put a fence? Because it says setback, and a setback is twenty feet.
I think in that thing, well, fences, we said you could be on a foot, within a foot, on the side.
Exactly, right, that way you can maintain your fence.
Right, right, and there should be something also in there, that the good side of your fence faces your neighbor, which has always been in.
Yeah, that's. Which we just, we discussed that.
Yeah.
There are, there are, from my understanding and from the person I talked to today, there are different regulations down on the lake than there are in the rest of the town. Where that came from, I don't know, a six foot fence that's up on Ridge Road, who cares?
Right.
But if it's down on the lake and it's blocking somebody's view or whatever, I could see that. Yes, and we have to take that into consideration.
I want you to look at the whole thing.
Because there is a, I think there is a state law that indicates, and I think I talked to John this morning about that, that you cannot block somebody's view on a lake, and that has gone to court, so, and there's a, there's a minimum height on, on, on the lake, so that's something we're gonna have to, to put in too, so.
So check those out.
And maybe that's what that forty-two inches is, but I don't know, why.
I, I don't know.
We'll have to look, so.
And the next thing, I have one more thing that I'm gonna bring up tonight, and I just want you to think about this now. In your tower, tower's gonna be a hundred and eighty feet.
Hundred and eighty-six feet.
Whatever, wherever the height.
Right.
The lot's only a hundred by a hundred, according to the ordinance or according to what this book says, the lot has to be at least as big as what the tower height is, which means that it would be a hundred and eighty-six feet by a hundred and eighty-six feet, and they do that because of the fall of the tower, if it ever fell. Now, I know the tower will never go sideways, it's gonna collapse straight down, but something has to be written in there to change that.
Where do you see that one in here, I didn't see that one, 'cause I went through that.
Page sixty-six.
Sixty-six.
Article twenty-seven, personal wireless service facilities. It doesn't say anything other than what the height should be, that's all.
Doesn't say anything about where to drop into. Says it should be surrounded by a fence, six feet high, but it does not say anything about.
Um, there's, it's, it's in another section too, though. And there were, again, there are two places where you can find tower.
Is it under setbacks and separation requirements?
Setbacks and separation, well, we can look underneath that.
The tower must be set back a minimum distance equal to the tower height from all lot lines, and set back a, a distance equal to one hundred twenty-five percent of the height of the tower from any off-site residential structures. The problem is that, that says all towers, and you have two types of towers.
Right.
So.
That one could be clarified easy enough when we, when we do the permit, that it states that it's a collapsible tower, that it comes straight down, so that we understand that.
But in, in, in this part here, the setbacks and stuff like that, that would be, it's like, like the Eiffel Tower, so to speak, I forget what they call that, but the other one is the monorail, I think they call it, goes straight, straight up, whatever, and it collapses.
Monopole.
A monopole, and it goes straight, straight down, so basically, we should, basically, in this part setbacks, separate the two.
Well, I, I know in the, while we've been doing this, and I've been working with that, because I'm working on the tower, as, as you know, that tower is supposed to fall within that a hundred by a hundred. So, I, we, we know that.
But this right here, as like John said, is very, very specific in what it says, and this tower would not apply here, because it's not that type of a tower.
Right.
But we don't define that here, so basically, this is like any tower.
Right, so what, what we gotta do is put in there, monopole towers should fall within, you know, within its thing.
But that's just like, it would be an A, B, C, maybe put in D.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Take care of it, and that way, if you ever have too much to put in, the Eiffel Tower type, you got it covered.
Right.
Not that they ever will, but it's covered.
Right.
So, it'll work. Just, just define it for me, so that.
Yeah, yeah, right now, the monopole that's going up there is fine, we know that that will definitely fall within what they got, that hundred by a hundred.
But, but the thing is, Roger, if it, if it's not.
Yeah, for you.
Yeah.
Then I've gotta send it to the ZBA, because I have to turn it down, and you don't wanna do that.
No.
All right, that's all I have for tonight, I'll have more for you next meeting. Okay.
Any other question on fence verbiage, if I can find it? Right, so in the, in the zoning ordinance on page one hundred, it's the definition for a structure.
On a hundred?
States that anything constructed or erected for the support, shelter, enclosure of persons, animals, goods of property of any kind, fixed location on or in the ground, such as well or attached to something, having fixed location on or in the ground, excluding patios, driveways, walkways, parking lots, whether paved or not, fences flag full of less than forty-five feet in height and walls less than forty-two inches. It doesn't seem to me like a fence would even need to be.
Has to fit in the setback, is that not?
No, it's saying it's excluding fences.
Excluding fences, okay, it's in two different places, that's what I'm saying, it contradicts, one section contradicts the other. And then, in the book itself, in the index, there's noth- nothing that says fences.
Says fences, right.
You should have something that says fence, and tell me where it is. When I go looking for it, oh, otherwise I have to go through this whole book, try and look for it.
Yeah, that should be under, that should be under.
I mean, that's an easy one to correct.
John, did Laura Parker ever download, we have folders now that have the ordinances in them, that the selectmen can share, we can all look at the same time on our computers, did she ever send that, she says she sent it to everybody. The planning board stuff should be in there as well, all these like that, so when you go in there, you can type the word fences, and anything in that, this book says, anything fences, it allows you to go right to those pages and look at them without having to look through the book. So much faster, easier way, that's just what she's doing.
Control F for find, control F for find, and you'll be able to find whatever you're looking for.
I mean, that will help you, I mean, actually, I mean, yeah, we got, you know, these little things are fixed, it's easy to do, so, but.
Yeah, well.
I just wanna give you a shortcut to help you out and make you.
Something where I can look real quick.
Right.
When somebody calls and wants some information.
And then, I mean, so out of a hundred some, a hundred ten pages, there may be six that has anything that has fences on those pages, and it just pulls up those six, same field a lot of time.
So this, this, again, we, we knew this when we, when we readjusted this whole book, and that was back in, of, of two thousand seventeen, and we're now starting to catch a lot of this stuff, where we have to, to refine it and get it down, and we'll be doing this probably for the rest of.
This is an ongoing thing, that's what this book is for, to make changes.
Exactly.
That's why it's here.
Yeah.
Okay?
I'm all done for you tonight, I won't pick on you anymore. All right, so.
So, if we can refer back to tiny houses.
Yeah.
You know, on page one hundred, structure temporary, temporary structures are required to meet.
Oh, that's what I wanted, I have one more, I'm sorry.
No, no temporary structures shall be allowed to meet and place longer than nine months, like John said.
That's the one I wanted to bring up.
So.
So temporary structures.
Right.
We have always allowed canvas shelters to be in this town, does that mean you have to take it down after nine months, 'cause it specifically states.
I'll read it, structure temporary, a structure without any foundation or footing, and removed when the design purpose or use has ceased. The structure shall not be connected to water or sewer, examples include a constant hot, portable shelter, portable garage, moving storage container, i.e. pods, portable shed, et cetera. A temporary sha- structure shall not include a storage trailer or tractor trailer unless, unless it is completely shielded from public, including neighbors, viewed by permitted structures distant and or vegetation, no temporary structure shall be allowed to remain in place longer than nine months, temporary structures are required to meet the setbacks and provided in this ordinance.
So I always require the setbacks, but I've never, the nine months, that means that somebody has to take their shelter down every nine months? That doesn't make sense.
I mean, in fact, that, that, we have a constant, we downed it, it's been there for years.
They're all over.
They're everywhere.
They're all over town.
My chicken coop doesn't have any footing, you're supposed to take that down every nine months?
That'd be, that'd be a tough one to enforce, yeah, for children, yeah.
So we gotta come up with something on that.
Yeah, we have to fix that.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand why it's there.
Right.
But.
But I've seen them break on someone else's border, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot, there's a canvas shelter right there, we're almost on the lines.
Canvas shelter has to meet the setbacks.
Right, but I've seen some that's not even setback.
Well, if somebody calls me and tells me that somebody's shelter is right on the property line, I could have to tell them, if they don't do it, they get a registered letter. If they don't do it then, then, then it can be fined.
You'll be busy if you try to enforce that.
With the nine month thing. Yeah, 'cause there's a lot of.
Not even one who's got a temporary.
They're all over town. Yeah, so.
Some towns don't even allow them, some towns make you pull a permit for them and, and do them full time, but you have to have a permit for them, we don't even require a permit for them, you can use them. We didn't, never had a nine month thing on there.
That must have been something that we pulled out of.
That came from.
The other, the other stuff that we were looking at.
We were looking at.
So there's.
We're gonna, we're gonna fix that.
Yeah, there's some corrections there, and like in structure up here, we went to forty-eight inches instead of forty-two inches, so, so we gotta, we gotta correct that, so there's. Like I say, there's probably a workshop where we're gonna sit down here, and we have all the things that we need, that we gotta look at and start pulling together and correct and make a, make a page on, so.
That's it for tonight.
Okay, so that.
Nothing else, John.
I promise I'll be back.
Well, we'll be here. That's okay, at least it's getting our book again up to date, you know, after we make those corrections, all we gotta do is put in here, or, well, we adopted it then, all we gotta do is put in, correct it on.
There you go, that's all you have to do.
Yeah, but it really is the, our jobs to make his job easier.
Oh, for sure.
And more enforceable, so.
No doubt about it.
We gotta take the gray area out of some of the stuff.
Right. So. So.
By the way, I, I, two of those people that called that I had registered letters with tonight complaining about waste management. But I understand you're gonna be talking to them anyway.
Monday night, Waste Management Representative will be here.
Okay. I didn't tell them that, because you don't want screaming people trying to conduct.
There won't be screaming people.
Right. You don't need this.
Okay, all right, thank you for your time.
Yeah, you're welcome, John.
Thank you, John, for getting, bringing us up, bringing that up to us, so we can go ahead and get those things corrected in there. And get them before the people, that way they'll know what's going on.
And I'll sign the contract for being on TV later on.
Yeah, what, how much you getting paid for being on TV?
That's what we're gonna discuss.
You can pay me fifty cents a minute.
Fifty cents a minute? Okay, uh, we've got something else here we gotta discuss before we jump on to old business, okay? I was giving a, uh, a piece of paper here. There is, this has, this lot was once two lots, which was two sixty and two seventy-one, that were merged together. Is it possible to divide back into two lots again? And if so, can we get on the agenda for next week? And, uh, this is, uh, uh, this is for Roger and Marie Patch. Yes, they can go ahead and readjust the adjust. We had talked about it before. You can, there's.
Take the, take the lots and subdivide them again?
Subdivide them back out.
Without having a survey done?
We.
Probably should request a new survey.
Yeah, we'll, we'll probably request a new survey.
Absolutely.
If they've got the old surveys, that's fine. I don't see why we can't.
Right.
Use the old surveys, I mean, providing they have it, if they don't.
Whereabouts is this land?
Uh?
Yeah, whereabouts is that?
It's on Nap.
Where? You know where they got Mr. Patch left? Is it on by the lake, is it?
It's down by the lake.
Small lots?
Yeah, it's a, it's a funky angle too, there's one lot that comes from the street here. And the other lot is on Nicola that goes along this way behind a couple of other houses.
Oh, we're gonna need your survey.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it looks like there's a lot in front, and then they're talking about the lot in back, that they merged together. Doesn't look like it's two lots put together, two sixty.
Yeah, it's like a.
Two seventy-one.
But, you shouldn't want to have a lot of issue with the survey, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
That's why we should have measures.
Huh? I looked at numbers on my way home.
Yeah.
I gotta go right down to color anyways.
Yeah, well, you know what lot, you, you, you got the book for the lot numbers? Is it on Nicole, because he never mentioned where it was.
He just mentioned Nicole, so.
Yeah, there's a section of it, it's like a little skinny strip, that's like one point eight nine acres. That runs along Nicola, and then the house is on the street on the other side.
Yeah, I would, yeah, he, they can go ahead and re-subdivide, but again, the board wants to see.
It's got the paperwork.
Yeah, the paperwork, and also too, making sure they have pot plans.
And a survey.
Yes.
So, for the sake of my paperwork trail here, is it that they would need to like start the subdivision process all over again?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
I think they're asking, is it, is it a simple, here, can we just read?
No.
And the answer is no.
No, we gotta have all the, all the goodies.
Okay.
Gotta start the whole process over.
Right. Because there's, there's, like, we all know there's a lot of problems up in that area, a lot of, we're gonna just make sure that it's the right, in the right area. We don't want somebody coming in there saying, well, you subdivided, and then now, uh, my bedroom's in the other lot.
And the survey and that went out with that.
Yeah, and we, and we've had it that way, you know?
The property we just bought, before we could buy it, there had to be a lot line adjustment on the far side, because somebody was trying to sell their house. And apparently, our lot was in a corner of their house. And so before either of them could sell. So our property now divides the back of their yard in half.
And believe it or not, that happens a lot, there, there was a home built in Middleton on somebody else's lot.
Yeah, I remember hearing about that.
Eddie Badger was the same way with it. I think, like I said, down there when they did that, they just, the guy that day was drunk, uh, uh, and just took the tractor. Instead of making the lots like this, he just went, there it is, there you go. You know, or it was, it was a Friday at five o'clock. So.
Even, even some of the lots out there, when they hire surveys to come in to survey them, they can't get them straight.
No.
Because that's how bad they are.
Yeah, well, behind my house, when they built another one, the surveyor came up, and I'm like, where, where are you doing? Oh, it ends here, I said, no, no, my pin's right there. They claim it's fifteen feet more on to my side, like, no, this doesn't go square off, because if it did, it would go right through this guy's swimming pool.
Yeah.
Everything goes like this, backs up, it, they do zigzags, all, all in that half mile circle.
Yeah.
Over.
Right.
By the corner of that one, no, no, they, they own up to there.
So, the big thing, when you talk to her, or him, or whoever this gentleman is, let him know what we're, what we're looking for, what we'll be looking for.
Yeah.
Okay. Now. We are going to go into old business. All right. As you know, we approved the application for, uh, the young lady for the home business for, for the hair, the hairdresser. At that time, we did not. For, for the better lack of, we whipped the cart before the horse, now we gotta come back and correct and put the horse before the cart. So that's what we're doing today, we had to give ten days' notice to everybody that this woman was putting in a business up there. So, it's basically to come back and reapprove what we've already approved, and pretty much.
The butters have been notified, and if they wanted to show up today, they could give their fair share.
They would have been here. The only one I've had a call from was Evelyn, and Evelyn would just like to get a copy of what, uh, Schultz, that's her name.
Yeah.
Brought, brought, uh, with her application, if she could get a copy of that, you could give that to me, and I'll make sure it gets to her. She wants to.
So, a copy of the application? Because there's not.
Uh, what she showed, what the state.
She had a whole bag binder she brought with her to demonstrate, but we don't have that.
We don't have it.
Right.
She took that with her.
We should have that.
So she should ask for a neighbor.
We should have made copies of all the stuff that she has and read, I mean, put it in her folder.
Okay, what I'll do is I'll, uh, I'll get a hold of Mrs. Schultz and ask her if we can get a copy of that book.
Yeah, have her make copies of the whole, the file that she has.
Yeah, I'll do that too, but anyways, at that time, we approved the application, so I'm gonna just go ahead and ask the, make a motion to reapprove the application again, as of tonight, we know what the application was. So, anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application of Mrs. Schultz, is that it?
Elaine Schultz.
Elaine Schultz. Elaine Schultz.
Second?
We got a second. All in favor of the approval of the application, and I hate to say it, which we already have approved, uh, say hi.
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 Any nays? Okay. Next time, we gotta, I gotta make sure, and that, and basically, that was my fault for not making sure the butters. I saw it, but I kinda went by it, so anyways. Uh, okay, no public, no. Members comment, uh, I had a couple I wanted to say, but I can't think of what could work.
Are you gonna be at the hang on Saturday?
That meeting?
You conquered?
Uh, right now, no.
Okay.
I forgot. If you don't remind me to fifteen times, I, I told a woman today on the phone that I'm, I'm a senior. And I do have brain cramps, and my brain caps are getting sooner and sooner.
Well, I just, I haven't, I haven't registered yet, but I was gonna go home tonight and register for.
Okay, all right.
You gonna go by yourself?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, don't, don't forget, claim your mileage.
Yes.
And also too, uh, you shouldn't have had to pay for that.
They won't pay them at firm.
Submit for reimbursement.
Okay.
Yeah.
You sure you don't wanna do that? You don't wanna go to that?
I gotta work on Saturday.
You gotta work?
Oh, yeah.
Anybody?
Since the sixth, I can't.
Yeah, I'm gonna be out of town.
So.
You're solo.
That's okay.
I mean, I would if I didn't have to work, but I work the weekends, so.
Yeah, well, we're, we're gonna have to start jumping on a few of these.
They have, they have them all the time, actually, so it's, it's no big deal if you miss this one.
Okay, members comment, what was I gonna say?
Don't know, if you got it.
Yeah, I know a senior woman.
Just start writing things down.
Team mobile thing?
No, that's, that's, I already talked to Joe about that, uh, uh. I think the biggest thing is, once we kinda get all this stuff put together before March, we're gonna sit down, pull it all together, put it in, put it in some kind of, you know, all we gotta do is take one of these pages out of here, correct that page, and have it there at the meeting, so that way there it comes back in the book, we don't have to re-invent the wheel.
We have everything that John put down, that we have to address.
Yeah. So.
And I, and I love that he came and, and spoke to us about that, because really, he's the one who's acting this out.
Yeah, he's unfortunate.
And so, really, he's got hands on, and every day, and like, hey, this does not work.
Right. And we gotta also make sure that we bring in, and you might wanna put that down, is that, that one on Schultz there on the lakeshore, and, uh, because that was a real mess-up thing too, that we had, so we gotta correct that, that thing too. So, one page said you could do it, and the next page said you couldn't do it.
Right.
Yeah, so, but anyways. Any other, um, members that have anything they would like to get off their chest?
And memo that we need to discuss.
Memo, oh, yeah.
And also, before we get, I know.
I know, I got it right here. So.
Before we get too far into that, I do want to let you all know that I am tendering my reservation as of the thirtieth of November.
November, okay.
So, you've got me for another month, but my time is just getting too cramped. And I just, I don't feel like I'm able to put the time in to get things done properly here.
Okay, no problem, we can start putting out some information.
We appreciate all the work you've done, though.
Yes, no, no doubt about it, okay, uh.
No, we don't you quit.
Quit meeting. We right now have, back in October, we were supposed to put our budget together and give it to the, to these gentlemen here, uh, the selectmen. And for some reason, we didn't get it done. So what I'd like to do is, while I'm sitting here tonight, is let's go through our budget, and, uh, pull this together, and I think what I did last year is I just handed it to Joe, and Joe just took it from there and ran with it. So I think I'll do the same thing tonight. There are some, there are a few things in here that I really think we could do and some cutting back on. Uh, right now, what we've got left, uh, staff reg plans. Uh, let's see, we budgeted year-to-date, I don't, we budgeted two thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And we spent two thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-six cents.
That's for the membership at the SPRC.
Huh?
That's for membership at the SPRC.
Oh, okay. So, should we, are we, do we have to keep that? Yeah. So do we wanna keep that?
Yeah, but, so what was the, how much did you spend year-to-date?
We spent, uh, we got ninety-nine previously expended. We spent, uh, well, we got remaining budget is fourteen cents.
Staff and vehicle planning, you had a year-to-date budget, twenty-one, twenty-seven.
Right.
Year-to-date actual, twenty-one, twenty-six, so you have fourteen cents remaining.
Exactly.
So you, it's, uh.
But that's like a one bill, and you get the bill, and you pay.
First of the year after March, you pay for it, it's a done deal. I, you know, recommend that, that you can keep it at, at that point, okay? Don't change it. Newspaper ads, we spent nothing, we spent four hundred dollars, again, I keep it, because you don't know when you're gonna need to have it.
Right.
If you go to one dollar, you can leave it open, but, you know, now you're gonna be in a deficit, but you use it. This isn't gonna hurt to keep some of this open, even if you don't use it. We do this year, year to year, on some of the stuff we do for Slut. So, um, workshop, eight hundred. So workshops, when you go to this thing Saturday, that money comes out of workshops, along with your, the, the cost of it, and your mileage reimbursement, okay? That's how it should be taken care of.
Yes, but do you think we should cut that back a little bit, eight hundred bucks, or just?
Well, no, I mean, no, I wouldn't cut it back, but we need to have a commitment for the board members that we go to some of these workshops and take them out.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're gonna do a job.
But the, 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 the thing about workshops is, when, when all these things come out, they're in the, the old town, the, to old town and country.
Right.
And weren't, and, and these places like, where she, she went online and found it, that are not sending it to us to let us know that they're having these things anymore.
So basically.
It comes to my email, and I forwarded some of them on.
So, so, but basically, it's just a lack of, we don't know when they are and when, when they're coming up, so.
I mean, the, the budget for it is definitely reasonable, because I mean, it's gonna be a hundred dollars just for me, and that's just for the three lectures.
Right.
So.
I think we gotta leave that there.
All right, we'll, we'll leave it there, but we gotta make sure next year that we, we come up with some kind of better thing where we can, because she's.
Once you give it up, it's hard to get it back.
Huh? Yeah.
So.
But we've got three other, three other, and, and of course, us guys too, that should go for refreshers too.
Absolutely, because I mean, as, as laws change and stuff like that, and, you know, we need to be pretty much as current as we can be.
Yeah.
So, for sure, okay? So, so the next one is reference materials, you had two hundred dollars, we spent a hundred fifty-one, you got forty-nine bucks left, so we used it. But you never.
Hold on.
Go ahead.
Reference materials are the books that sit up there that never get used. So this year, instead of ordering the same number that I have been ordering in the past, I ordered one book, and I'm getting the digital copy of it, and it'll be on the flash drive, and it's costing us eleven dollars.
So that may, it, it, good, no, I mean, if it's read-only and stuff like that, we can share it to the, you know, stuff like that. We can put in a common folder that Laura's made up for, so we have all that information.
Right.
Like it, so.
And that'll be eleven dollars and stuff.
Okay. Maps and miscellaneous.
Uh, that's supposed to be that stuff.
Two, uh, a hundred dollars, nothing to spend, but for some reason, I think that's something that Slut is on our budget, we take care of.
This stuff here?
Yeah. But don't, you know, so.
Or is it that thing?
But that's part of that.
Yeah, so I don't understand where the maps and miscellaneous comes from for us.
If we want, is it copies of our own? We can't just go and look at them?
I don't know. Not much there we can really change.
Not, no, clerk is, is, is nineteen fifty-nine, which is. Not, no, clerk is, is, is nineteen fifty-nine, which is fourteen sixty-eight, we have four hundred ninety dollars left, which is seventy-five percent of the budget, which is all good, where we need to be. Um, planning consultant, one dollar, which is, that just keeps the line open in case you ever have to use it in the future.
Right.
And legal, five hundred, we never used anything, but having said that, there are probably some things that we have talked legal about, but the town has, uh, has absorbed it in their budgets, they're suffering it out this one year. So I'm sure there's some money that came out of there, cause you have talked to the attorney and, and some stuff.
On a couple things, but right now, I'm also, I'm using, uh, uh, the other legal quite a bit too, so.
So, I, I'll be honest with you, I mean, I don't think I changed anything on here, other than the, the reference materials. Honestly, I mean, just drop it down a little bit, but I wouldn't change that vision, like I said, you can get rid of it, you don't have to get it back.
No, we'll go ahead, we'll, we'll, we'll leave it like it is, uh, which I think we budgeted last year, total expenditures, yeah. We bought six thousand eighty, eighty-seven, uh, yeah, so. So it's six thousand eighty-seven dollars, so I think we should keep, keep it the same way.
So I have a note about the newspaper notices, and that is, so four hundred dollars is kind of a lot, and I know that newspaper ads can run crazy, but if anybody is needing to have a hearing that's out in the population of the town, they pay for the newspaper. So this newspaper stuff is only stuff where we as a planning board are calling a hearing to deal with a specific issue, like what John Lemon was saying today. So I really don't think that four hundred dollars is, you could get away with two hundred, and that'll cover you for two different hearings through the year. I think four is kind of overkill.
Yes, but right now, there are some stuff that's gonna be coming up here next year that I already know of. So I'd rather have, keep that four hundred dollars, because I know we're gonna be putting some ads in the newspaper to let people know, so. So I'd rather keep that for next year and then look at it the year after.
Yeah.
Uh, are we, uh, is the Sluggman putting in for pay raises?
We haven't discussed it yet.
Okay, whatever you put in for pay raises, same on here, okay?
Oh, yeah, I mean, if we do it, we do it very cross, and we're gonna make seven now, so.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, so.
I think we oughta keep it the way it stands, so.
Joe, you need this copy, or you all?
You sign off, this, uh, this is, this is the official, uh, budget for the planning board, sign and date it, now, hang on till.
Today, eighteen.
October eighteenth. Nineteen eighteen.
Eighteen October eighteen.
You did put down nineteen eighteen, Roger?
Oh, yeah.
I've been holding onto that paper for a long time, Joe.
Okay? But that was something.
Yellowed around the edges.
Yeah, that.
Is that coffee stains?
That was something important I definitely wanted to get out of the way, because I, I put it in the book and I couldn't remember. So that tells you, don't put it in my book, because I'll forget it. Uh, alright, any, anything else we need to discuss? Alright, uh, I'm open to adjournment.
Most to adjourn at seven twenty-four.
Second day.
All in favor of adjournment?
I, I'll quicken that second one.
Yeah.
Don't worry, she beat me to it.
If you think of it, she's saying.
Great mindset.
We were on the third Thursday, haven't we?
No, that was just, just a month. It is actually very early, it's the eighth.
The eighth?
Yeah.
What's, what's the third Thursday?
The fifteenth.
You know, eight, the seventh, fifteen?
I won't be here.
That's okay, we go there, we, we, we're gonna, you know, right there. You wanna shut that, who shut that off?
Oh, hang on a second, yeah.